Council Bluff Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be, member FDIC.
Well, we'll get started. Glenn will be here in a minute, I think. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce Wendy Schultz. I know some of you know Wendy, some of you don't. Wendy is now working in the mayor's office and we're, I'm very happy to have some assistance. So, welcome Wendy and I'm sure all of you will be getting to know her as we go forward. So, I don't know if you had anything special you want to say or... All right, on the top of the agenda today, we've got the Mid-America Partners LLC memorandum of understanding. Hope you got a chance to read that and we have Drew Pennington here with Mid-America Partners. If you have questions for Drew in regards to this. Drew Snyder, Matt Pennington is... You want to say anything Drew?
No, I mean, other than we've made obviously some communication with city staff to amend the MOU. We've changed the payment schedule. So, I think if you look at page four of the MOU, disbursement amounts have been adjusted for what we felt was more appropriate for the project. This would still pen approval from Iowa West and Pete's group to approve those lease payments. If I need to come up here.
Okay. We, under the city's request, we did add the section for common area transfer. That was a new section added and essentially if you go to the second to last page, I believe, where it's proposed site plan, the city advised us that it may make sense to have us take over the ownership and maintenance of the interior space between the buildings, which we were agreeable to do. So, we just outlined that on the proposed site plan as an addition to the MOU. And...
Kind of way that's belongs to the city, maybe it doesn't make sense to...
Correct.
liability standpoint from the maintenance standpoint.
The other thing that we did, which we felt was definitely in the city's best interest was we, the total disbursement or the total incentive was reduced down to $4,871,000 and $1,997,000 of that is actually tied to tenant improvements or build out. So, to us, that's really indicative of performance. We're going to need to come in and perform lease up the space and stabilize the building. So, you know, a large chunk of the incentive that's going to be available is going to be performance based, so...
Can you kind of highlight that because I'm not sure there's a clear understanding on that. Maybe there is, but you don't get that money until you perform the lease up. You don't get that money until...
Right.
You put the signs up. You don't get that money until...
Yeah, so...
Reorient the doors.
Right. So, the way that the MOU is structured is we have to go in and front the dollars to do the parking lot overlay, do the HVAC structural repair, complete the pylon signs along the interstate and then obviously lease the space. So, we front our own dollars to do that work and then upon completion of the work, we come into the city. City verifies, yes, in fact, the work has been done and then makes the disbursement to us, the developer. So, we front our own dollars to do that. And though, but the funding, the one thing you've got to note is that the funding will not be available to the city immediately. Those funding sources, as we've laid out in 4.1 of the MOU, will come initially from Iowa West. The lease payments that Iowa West is to receive this year and then in 2015 would be the initial dollars that the city would have available to disperse us. And then the balance would come from the TIF revenues that are coming into the district that are not pledged by the city. So, hopefully that makes sense to all the council members. That was, that's been one thing we've kind of been going back and forth with, with the city, just trying to understand how those revenues are coming in to the TIF district and when they're available.
Which was the reason we pulled it off last time is that we had kind of doubled up the...
Right.
The payments. And then, just so we're clear, when I looked at that, it's not the city's responsibility to work out an agreement with the Iowa West Foundation. You'll do that.
Correct.
It's not the city's obligation to work out any negotiation with Bass Pro for the...
Correct.
The additional lot and that negotiation should not detrimentally affect the city's current lease with Bass Pro.
Correct. We would, we would not put the city in a position where financially it would make any impact on that lease revenue that's coming in on Bass Pro today. We would simply just try to utilize the relationship that we have with Bass Pro to get them to release the excess ground that from what we can tell, they do not use. And it's valuable, you know, it's real estate that a restaurant operator or somebody we think could utilize and put a restaurant facility on.
Any questions?
I think it's, you guys did a great job between the two of you, really working this out and getting an agreement that is a lot more beneficial, so thanks Matt and developers for working together.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have a question on this MOU? I have to go because they won't be able to hear you, sorry.
That's right, I forgot.
I'll make everybody get up and down. All right, looking at these numbers over and looking at what would be a typical TIF request, it still looks excessive to me. I don't, you know, I look at the numbers and I look at, you know, basically what we're looking at is more like a 19-year to take, to pay that back and that just seems incredibly excessive to me. And for the increase in value, so my question to you is, you see a lot of these, do you see the financial benefit in this? Do you believe that this is a good project, you know, with the dollars that are on it? Because I don't, I mean, I just don't. It seems like a lot of money that with very little return on that, considering what the increase in the assessed value is.
Well, there's, there's a little bit of subjectivity in this. At 19 years, it is longer than, than what we usually do, which is usually 10 to 12 years. So, it is much longer. The second thing that comes into play is usually it's the, it's the new investment that's generating the TIF dollars that in turn is creating more value. And so, it's the new investment generally that's, that's paying those tax dollars. That's, that's getting, paying property taxes, which then generate the TIF rebate. In this case, it's not the new investment that's doing that. It's the new investment on existing property that makes it different from, from what we've done in the past. So, it's not saying, one, not saying whether it's a good investment or bad investment. That's not for me to say, but what I am saying is that the payback is a lot longer than we normally would do and we're paying from, we're, we're paying for, there'd be TIF money coming from existing properties, existing investment and usually the purpose is to create new investment, which will generate property taxes, which go toward the rebate. So, I don't know that we're, I don't know that we've created, I don't know that we've created new value down there to, to really get it going.
Well, I guess my, my question on that would be is that, you know, we don't have a city policy on, you know, we stay flexible as we can on how we utilize TIF. But I guess my question would be the dollar amount that would be given to the developer compared to the dollar amount of increase on that property for assessed value.
That's, that is, that does seem higher than anything we've done in the sense, you know, usually you're leveraging those dollars where you might invest $1 and hope to get anywhere from $5 to $8 in investment out of it. Here we're, it's almost one for one in terms of what we're doing. And so, there's really not a lot of leveraging going on. The other two things that sort of, you know, that give me a little bit of pause is the, if I, if I read the 4.1 in Article 6, it says that the city will cause to be deposited X number of dollars, $2.4 million, starting April 14th or about 10 weeks from now. Well, as far as I know, those proceeds that I get in April, I need to give to Iowa West. So, it does become really important that, you know, if Iowa West is going to be in on this, we know it and we, and that the language makes certain that we don't get, find ourselves in a position where I've got to honor one contract and then honor another contract with the same money.
Which was really the, the point of my question to get Drew on the record that, because that is how it reads to me too, the city shall cause to be, which it looks like it's our obligation to me to make that happen.
That's how I read that and I was kind of amplifying what you'd said just to...
Should we change it?
As I was asked, yeah.
Why can't we change that in the agreement or the rest?
The verbiage that he has in parents there as described in the foundation agreement, that I think is to address that it's subject to that agreement in essence. But yeah, we can clarify that, that point.
I just think it's better in the long run to clarify it.
Okay.
So, we can...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I just have a general comment on most of these things that come before us and I think that it was brought up last time and maybe even the time before and I think, I think you brought it up. There, there's no, we usually get a council communication, which, which we did on this, but there's no recommendation at the bottom of it that seems to be missing. Do you know why?
No, I don't know why. I would say that we have a process, we, we, we need a process that where we, when something comes before us, the person who brings it in from the outside goes through a department head. I would, you know, in sense TIF, it generally tends to be development related. I'd, I'd say that community development and should handle that. And at the end of the process, there's, there should be an evaluation of it with a sign off.
That's what we normally see. But this, but this comes, came in from legal though, not from community.
Well, I'd tell you that this started before I was the mayor.
Right.
I stepped in, spoke with Drew, we had numerous conversations. It goes back from Drew's people to Dick because the memorandum of understanding is a legal document and department heads have mixed feelings on this, which was one of the reasons you didn't see an initial recommendation.
I remember that part, yeah.
And frankly, since that time, probably my fault for not stepping up and taking ownership. It's as good as, my sense is, is as good as it's going to get if you want to consider this deal. And so, again, there's, there's still mixed feelings among staff as to whether it's a good deal or not a good deal. Arts, I asked them this morning at the staff meeting to speak with full candor on what their opinions were and so, if you've got questions, please don't hesitate to ask them.
Well, I have another question for you, Art. One of the things that when we asked for more of the financial data, it clearly stated on there that any proposed leases, any, you know, any leases that may be in the works on that building be disclosed. And then when we got that, that wasn't on there. If those numbers were on there, if, if there's a potential lease for the HDR and DOT property that they're looking to lease, that I understand they're planning on moving in, wouldn't those numbers affect how this pans out on paper and how it appears to cash flow if in fact there was already an agreement or some pre-agreement on that?
Yeah, I don't recall looking at all of the detail that was enumerated among the leases. If they insert, if, if there were dollar values approximating what a, you know, the lease that you're referring to, if they were included in the cash flow projections, then it wouldn't make, would not make a material difference in looking at what the, what the value is and what the cash flow projections do if, if they've included an estimate for that unnamed tenant. So, part one is, it may, it may not have made an impact on the total value of it. But what it does do practically speaking is when you evaluate what's happening down there and, and answering the question as to how distressed is the area? Do we really need to make an economic development grant to go in there to stimulate the area? It does, it does have a bearing on how you answer that question. If there is, if there is something coming in that with, with some certainty, then, then is the market taking care of itself? And, and do you need to make an economic development grant or don't you? That's a different kind of question that, that knowing whether or not there was a, somebody about to sign a lease. It answers a different kind of question. It doesn't, it does not necessarily make the original cash flow projections incorrect or materially misstated, but it does bear, it does have some bearing as to whether or not we really need to stimulate that area. And that's a, I mean, that's not an easy thing to answer. It's, it takes a knowledge of the market.
Development would be the actual thing that would stimulate?
Well, and that's, that's the other thing that needs to be, you know...
Maybe three quarters. One, Dick just showed me, it does say that I'm recommending it on...
Yeah.
And then, secondly, we have rewritten those benchmarks and the benchmarks only pertain to square footage rented. So, I don't know that there's any hidden agenda to not let people know that HDR is going there. They only get reimbursed when they rent square footage and so, there's, there'd be no incentive to hide that on their part. They'll get reimbursed if they rent it and if they don't, they won't. And then the third thing, somebody just said something that jumped into my mind, so...
I guess my question on that is when I looked at it originally and I looked to see, well...
Yeah, the benchmarks have changed though since the original.
Well, that's true, but you're still talking about in the big picture. Is this property that will or will not cash flow itself? Do they really need to...
Alls I can tell you, and I told staff this this morning, Mike McCarthy, who is one of the most astute investors in Omaha, said, "Why would I ever buy anything I could never sell and that has no market value today?"
The place as it is right now?
Yep.
Correct.
Ms. White, a couple of things that might help clarify. We negotiated the HDR lease, which we have been in active negotiations with those folks. Couple of things to consider is the negotiations with HDR were under the assumption that we would have an agreeable MOU or an incentive package with the city. We have to give HDR about $90 a square foot, which for the rent we will receive is about a 12-year payback. We have to give them so much of a substantial amount of TI because the floors aren't finished. There's no mechanical systems, as we've talked about previously. The building is really in a shell condition. So, I think without the incentive package, the HDR lease that we've negotiated goes away just because we can't perform on it and we know Mutual of Omaha Bank won't perform on it because it doesn't make financial sense. The payback to the city, one thing we, we all need to note here is this is a one-time right that Iowa West would agree to not accept lease payments, which we think is a very unique scenario. And it goes away, starting in, starting in April, that, that right is going to go away because, Art, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's four payments left to Iowa West, I believe.
That's correct.
Per that, per the lease agreement, so...
There is no lease agreement. There's, there's not a...
Per the, per the development agreement, I'm sorry, development agreement. So, there's, there's four payments there. Iowa West has such a substantial investment from what we've been told, that they want to contribute to the project. We're getting very favorable signs from Iowa West, Pete Tulipana. And so, really the city's portion of the incentive for 4.8, half of that's coming from the city. The other half is coming from Iowa West.
It surprises me when you say how favorable your response from Pete Tulipana is because in my conversations with Pete as of just last week, that was not the indication that I was, that I received. That was not what he told me. So, I don't know that they're that sold on this project, but I can definitely say that the conversation we had and Art was there, Al was there at the time, did not indicate that they were very excited about this. So, I want to be real clear that, you know, this isn't something that Iowa West Foundation is all about and thinks is a wonderful thing because that is not what he told me.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, but I think since the two of you have had a conversation that maybe the three others haven't had, it's not really fair. I've had a similar conversation, which I reiterated to Drew and Pete Tulipana's statement was, a spaghetti works or another restaurant is not going to excite his board. It's going to have to be something that would draw people down there out of the ordinary in order to get them to, to get on board. So, he's not overly thrilled as you said, but he's...
Just not as it stands right now and what's being proposed right now, it's not something they're terribly excited about.
And that's...
Because it's not going to draw the people down there as this in particular won't.
Right. And that's not a, we're not unfamiliar with scenarios like that where we'll, in a development agreement, I mean, this is an MOU, so we still have a development agreement to negotiate, but we'll, we will spell out specific uses or types of restaurants or we'll elaborate further on what is acceptable, which is probably what Iowa West is looking for. They'd like to probably define that a little bit closer, which we're, we're willing to do. We're willing to discuss that and, and make sure that we can bring in the right users to generate the traffic we're looking for.
I've got a question, just on, and I don't know if it's Dick or Matt can answer, but this, this is not all of the terms of what eventually will happen and every, this is just the, the initial agreement and then the council's going to see something else again in the future with more specifics for us too?
I'll let Dick respond to that because I don't want to mislead you.
The actual development will have a lot more detail. All the details should be consistent with what's within this document, but it will be a lot more detailed.
So, there'll be additional information that perhaps Iowa West and we can get a little bit more excited about?
But I think what Dick's saying is you can't widely deviate from this memorandum of understanding and come up with something completely off the wall.
No, I understand that, right, right. But the, but the type of restaurants that come in there might change or something might change.
Correct.
It's still going to be restaurants and some offices.
Right.
Retail's undefined, the restaurants are undefined and that may be more exciting as we, as we progress.
Right. I mean, we will try to more clearly define specifically to Iowa West, what exactly they're looking for. I mean, based on what we know about the market, what they're seeking for tenants, we'll try to obviously work collaboratively with those folks to get some agreeable language. Typically it's certain uses or sizes or restaurants that we'll put into a development agreement.
But it's not just you and Iowa West. I mean, you'll be involved in it as well, Don?
Right.
The real purpose of the memorandum is, is to bring a document forth to the council to get you to weigh in on it before staff goes through a series of amendments to the urban renewal plan. Dick takes the time to start developing a development agreement and so...
Should you talk into that?
So then, but once they agree to the...
So, the people at home can hear you, Don? I don't want to make you repeat everything, but we heard you.
Do you want me to repeat that?
No, but if there's anything else, you get to come up here.
Probably better.
Yeah, because I'll have a couple of questions too, as long as you're up there so you won't have to hop up.
The real purpose is, is because it's an urban renewal area, you have to follow state law and, you know, before we initiate a bunch of administrative actions, we want to bring the basis of the deal to the council, the legislative body, to see if it's acceptable, you know, before we put a lot of, of staff time and effort into that.
Don, when you, on prior requests we've received, I think you would show us kind of how, how this project would sit within a pie chart, you know, and whether or not it was a good project or not, you know? And we didn't see that on this one and I kind of like those when you do them.
A pie chart?
Well, it wasn't a pie chart. You would put it in a pyramid and you would show where it would fall in the quadrant.
I think those are primarily truly economic development projects, industrial development projects. Is, is, I've done that, where you look at the quality of wages and look at the investment level, the tax, the tax base, and just create a matrix. And that, that doesn't really fit this.
It doesn't fit this, okay. So, we didn't get a recommendation out of planning on this, that I realized is coming out of the mayor's office. If it had come out of your department, the way it's written now, would we be getting a recommendation from your department to proceed with this?
At the levels, probably not.
Okay.
I mean, I think the real issue on this project is, is, you know, here, here is the, you know, I personally believe this is a, a project that obviously has problems that need to be fixed. It's always going to be expensive and I don't know that that's going to change in two years or three years. I mean, I, I think that what the mayor has just told you is probably true in his conversations with others. You know, you were asking, Art, you know, what is the value of, let's say, you know, how much do you expect in private sector investments, you know, with a TIF? And I would say, just off the cuff, it's probably $5, $6 for every public dollar that you've put in. You would get that in, in your larger shopping centers. Now, that, those are greenfield developments, a little different. The one that comes closest to this is, you know, the marketplace. I think we were at $1 to $2. I mean, and that, I think that's really the challenge.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just looking at the other requests that's in our packet and I look at what, how that request stacks up on a new construction and how much is being added to the tax base and how much they're asking for and it's just night and day.
But isn't part of the problem the fact that this is, I mean, we're stuck with this property the way it is and it's almost like we're having to start fresh as far as re...
Well, I think the problem's probably a multitude of things. One, the property is at a certain value now, which maybe that has to change.
Indeed, it's really in the hole, isn't it, as opposed to...
Right, but it's, but it's excessive, you know, so we're, we're giving the property more credit than it's really worth probably right now in the state it's in. So, it's hard to compare it to a norm, at least that's how I'm looking at it.
I think there is some uniqueness to this.
So, I think, and I think that's, that's probably what adds the, the inability for staff and many of us to, it's not a clear, quick decision, not that anything is, but this is even worse because I, I want something done, you know, I would like to see something done down there. It's been kind of a, a shell for many, many years, too many years. And so, for me, it's, it's deciding if this is the right, the right project to go in there. And I, I mean, that's probably what we're all struggling with is, you know, what else, what are other options?
Isn't that really the question before us today? It's, it's, we're all agreed that we want something to happen down there because right now, and I mean, there's no disrespect to the businesses that are there. I'm quite impressed that they're able to do as well in the environment, that it's, it's just not very lively down there. It's not a happening place. It wasn't quite what we envisioned. Is, is the idea of spending in a situation where even if it was a wash, let's say every dollar we put in would only get back a dollar, would that be a catalyst? Would that lead to other things happening down there? I think is really the question for us today. And, and the other difficult thing is what realistically, what other alternatives will be on the horizon? Which of course is impossible to know, but the only thing I think you can say is the past has indicated that I don't think the odds are great, which, you know, in a, in an ideal or perfect world, well, we wouldn't need TIF at all, would we? But it would, it would cash out at six or 12 or 18 times, but I'm not so sure this one will. So, I'm not sure if... So I, I'm not sure if this, this might be the, this might very well be the exception to the general rule, because it, it's not a new site, it's a site with a history, and overall, it's not a very good one, but I also appreciate it's a lot of money.
I guess I'm wondering though, is, you know, it's not city-owned property, so it isn't our burden right now in that area.
Very true.
If there was a proposal to bring something in that wasn't offered anywhere in the metro area, that would truly make people drive down there, other than just a proposal of restaurants and offices, I might see that it could cause other development on the vacant land around there, but I don't see that with this project, and that would be its only value to me. Um, because what they're gonna do with the building itself is not really gonna drive a lot of people down there. Um, so I guess I have to ask myself is, you know, what, what are we actually getting out of it? And I also wanna know from Don, if you have the number, if the council were to agree to this, and I asked you this before, but I don't know if, you know, how specific you can get, if the council agreed to this, and then we did have a, a really good project come down the road that really would motivate more traffic down there, would there be money available in the TIF to offer anything to anybody else? I mean, would there be anything enough generated that we would have any, because we're taking basically what's being generated by all the other properties to accommodate this.
I don't know that I can answer that, I know.
Well, once the Iowa West, and, and I sent you those numbers, I think, and, you know, I don't have them in front of me. Once the Iowa West payback's done, which is about a million three and change a year. And, yeah, and I wanna make clear, if you didn't catch it, the repayment of this is expedited to two and a half years versus the five, I think we originally were at, and, and a lot of that had to do with trying to control the interest expense, but, um, it was a nine hundred, what is it, four seventy-one, so nine forty or something, a year, I'm just doing that from memory, so it's not accurate. So the difference is that one three versus the, the nine forty, uh, that that area produces annually. And there is no pool of money today, because it's all been going to Iowa West, so.
I, okay, so.
So that.
After two and a half years, cause you're gonna, are you gonna have to extend then the, urban renewal district or anything, are you gonna have to, I thought this TIF was up in.
Five years.
Five years, okay.
You can't.
Okay.
I think that's probably, you know, you'd have to, I'd have to defer to Art on the cash flow as far as the TIF here. Um. The real challenge is, you know, given the length of the TIF and how much has been burned off, um. And I haven't raised this with my counterparts, but there may be certain portions of the existing urban renewal that we should amend and pull out. Because if you did have the prospect, that landed, you are limited to five years. And that's gonna be difficult for you to deal with. Uh, so there might be certain portions that aren't producing revenue to the district that we pull out, uh, that are vacant, that, um, if we have a project, we can kinda reset.
Okay.
That makes sense?
That does make sense, okay.
Ed, I, I have another question, and this returns back to the point of viability of, of, of this particular area. And, uh, we've discussed what's there now, what we think might be on the horizon. We're, we're waiting right now for, uh, for Convention Visi- Visitor Bureau's roadmap, their assessment on, on how they should go. Uh, council has before it a, a CIP for, for the MAC that is seven plus million dollars in, uh, in investments. Uh, plus, we, we still don't know what's going to happen to the, to the Greyhound track, which would make a huge difference in, in potential future development. So, given those uncertainties that we, that we presently have, do you have a crystal ball big enough to really provide an assessment as to what this area could look like in a payoff period from thirteen to nineteen years?
I don't, I mean, I, I do think that, um, uh, the three major parties which have a pretty good interest in this area, meaning the city, Iowa West, and probably, uh, Harris needed to sit down and, 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 uh, do some of that. And kinda come to a conclusion of what can we do.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Review the agenda, anything on the consent agenda? Art, can you just give a quick synopsis of the bonding and, um, cause there's new people on, and I think maybe, probably give him credit, cause I guess I heard Al in asking me the other day, I think he understands it, so.
I, I do.
For everybody else, uh.
The, as, as part of the capital improvement plan, we forecast each year, we forecast out five years, the projects that we'll be doing, as well as the sources of revenue, uh, as well as the sources of funding for those projects. And a portion, you know, anywhere from a third, twenty-five to thirty-five percent of what we do in capital projects each year, comes from issuing general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds are not a whole lot different from a mortgage. There's, they're borrowing, there's interest payments, and those, the principal and interest payments are raised from the taxpayers annually, um, in the form of a debt service levy. Our debt service levy in the past had been as high as three dollars and ten cents, you know, we're getting it down in the two fifty range. Anyway, for the upcoming year, we are looking at about seven point six million dollars in projects that we have indicated we'd like to, um, acquire through the, with the funds from issuing general obligation bonds. One of the things that, the, that, one of the things that the bonds do is they allow us to spread the cost of acquiring this property or these various improvements over the period of time that they'll be used for. We pay up, we, these projects are long-term projects, we don't put police cars on it. We don't do building repairs or painting with general obligation bonds. If we're gonna pay these things off over fifteen years, we usually want it to be things that last fifteen years. Uh, the, uh, we work with, we work with PFM, um, Public Financial Management out of Des Moines, with Mark Corey from the, um, law firm of Ayers and Cooney, to serve as our bond counsel and help us with the transaction. They advise us every year when a good time to issue the bonds would be, and this year, they've indicated that we should do it this spring. Um, there's, they believe that, uh, it's possible to get our bonds issued, uh, um, in late March, receive the proceeds in April. So the process works this way, we set a public hearing. We look at the projects that we're going to get and we, we say whether or not they're for an essential corporate purpose or a general corporate purpose. If they're for essential corporate purpose, we can borrow based on having council approval. If they're general corporate purpose, we can borrow based on having council approval, but the people within the community have the ability to say, wait a second, we'd like a vote on that. That's why you see four different categories of, uh, of, uh, assets that we'd like to acquire. The bulk is essential corporate purchase, that you can allow us to, you can allow us to do by your, um, approval. Anyway, we're setting a public, we're setting four public hearings today to take place two weeks from today. Public can give us their comment and their input, um, after which, you know, you'll have the, uh, ability to authorize us going forward. After you've authorized us to go forward, we will then, um, have a credit call with Moody's. That's scheduled for March seventh. They'll give us a bond rating, once we have, once our credit's been rated again. We'll go out to the bond markets and say council bluffs is here to issue bonds, who would like to bid? They'll, they'll do the bidding, we'll get the results of that bidding, we'll come back to you and say, this is what people are offering us. Um, this is the proceeds that we'll get, this is what it'll cost in future years, and then you have a chance to approve it at that. Then you have a chance to still approve or disapprove the transaction at that time. Takes about eight weeks from start to finish, and what you're doing with this transaction today is simply, not simply, is, uh, setting a public hearing is a rather important thing to do. You're setting the public hearing to, to get citizen comments in two weeks.
And thank you, Art, for taking the, the job, taking on the job of educating me, you'd make a great microeconomics professor.
How about a, well, yeah, I enjoyed.
But only if you can speak with an East Indian accent. Anything on the public hearings before I get myself in trouble?
Um, yeah, I, I have a question on four C that, that we've been discussing that for several meetings now. So I noticed that the, um, the sell price is thirteen thousand, which covers all the city costs and, and, uh, so the, the buyer obviously is in favor of that higher price, cause that, it's more than twice what they originally ordered, uh, offered. Oh, sorry. I went to the wrong person. Short answer is yes?
I'm not aware that she is in favor of the higher price.
Okay, so it's just something that we're recommending then?
Yeah, that's what we appraised it at, um. If I understand the assessor's numbers correctly, they do actually assess government land. There's a number on their sheet, but they've got it valued at twelve, seven, thirty. For two thousand eleven, twelve and thirteen. Property itself was assessed by the appraiser assessor for ten, seven and nineteen ninety-eight. And it was last assessed for sixteen thousand, seven, seven, seven in two thousand seven. And that was, that's the land price.
So, so the resolution is to dispose it at thirteen thousand, but, um, we, that may not result in a disposition of the property if the, if the, if the party that was interested doesn't wanna pay that.
It may not.
Okay. Thank you.
I just gonna wait until you sit down before. Though I have just a quick question on four B, which is the Trainer State Bank. Um, was there any study done of the exist, the use of the existing parking there? Is this gonna, I mean, does that get much use, or did you guys study how many cars park there generally during the day?
Other than just conversations with, uh, Public Works, um, that's it, but no study.
No, really?
Very underutilized.
Okay.
By far, the most underutilized.
How many leases do we have there?
I, I used to work across the street for five and a half years, it was almost always completely empty, if not, ninety percent so, yeah.
And that's my observation, but I thought, well, I better just make sure there's not, uh,
Sure.
We haven't gotten any input from any surrounding businesses or offices complaining about losing parking.
I have not.
Okay, good.
Don, can I ask you about that, uh, what are, I noticed there was reference in the commu- council communication about, uh, the overlay and design standards. I'm not particularly familiar with what is applicable in that area. Could you, is there an easy way to?
Well, they would have to have, uh, ten feet of landscaping on their rightaways. Uh, there's a certain number of, of, uh, uh, trees and, and the shrubbery that has to be put into that landscaping. Uh, there is some control on the actual structure materials. I mean, like, we're not gonna allow a metal-sided building or a wooden building, that's not what they're proposing, but.
Sure, sure.
Uh, you know, the best example I could say is, is, uh, I think the landscaping, you know, adjacent to the new clinic on Broadway, uh, is probably a pretty good example of what is necessary for you to meet the standards, so.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, um, the photos that were in our packet though, that's pretty much what we're gonna see, or were there, those just, um, examples?
Well, I pressed them for that and I really didn't get a satisfactory answer, but I have to say, you know, you have to give me something. I mean, are you gonna build it like, you know, what you did, is that gonna be your, kinda your flagship model?
Right.
Um, and if they do, that would be.
Are they here today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we'd be perfectly acceptable to that.
I say it looks nice.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining.
I think that's their bank next to Burger King on twenty.
It's their Broadway one, yeah, and it turned out really nice, I mean, they.
Now, the challenge is here, I mean, that, I, is that, that bank out there, is that a two-story building?
Well, the proposed is a two-story, but, uh, that is not, I don't believe.
It's not, it's just really tall.
This isn't a two-story, but I think they're proposing two-story, yeah.
That's why I put the language in there that, you know, we want you to meet the corridor overlay design standards, cause I don't have anything else, if I don't do that. And that we wanna see kind of a, a more detailed plan, uh, before we close it.
I'm a little bit surprised that nobody else e- e- even inquired, or, I mean, I understand you had to go out through the public, but nobody.
It is in a floodplain.
It's a tough site.
Okay.
It really is. It's a visible site, but it's a tough site. Floodplain, they've got some work to do there, and we got a creek channel that goes through there, they're gonna work around there.
Which is why the lease, cause they, they'll need the creek, up in the creek channel.
And on that lot, dirt, lot two, parcel two.
And I, I was curious and looked myself, and as, as far as I can tell, the last record is one of the original fire stations in the nineteenth century was the last building on that corner, so.
Don't go there, cause I remember that.
It was built in the nineteenth century. Say it was turned down.
Had that white fireman.
Yeah, yeah.
At you in front of it, which I don't know where that is today.
It's up on North Broadway.
Light will probably tell us the foundations and footings are still there.
So that was just a few years ago, it was torn down.
Right next to the Chieftain Cafe. Anything else on, uh, public hearings? Uh, any question on the ordinance?
Is there any objection to waiving third on that? It seems very non-controversial.
I, I, I just had a couple of questions on that, though, just for clarification, cause I've gotten a lot of phone calls on, on this and a lot of emails, and, uh, and I, I thank the staff again for patiently providing me some education on this, uh, last Friday. It's my, my understanding, and I know she's kind of on the corner there, so I don't know if she can get out to, to answer the question, but. Uh, I guess my, my question was, uh, am I correct in my understanding that this will not affect, uh, the landlord's ability to transfer responsibility for, for trash pickup to, uh, tenants? Okay, no impact. And, and as I read the ordinance, it says sixty days from, from becoming delinquent, so. So let's see, if, uh, if the bills are, are due next on February fifteenth, that would take us up till July, till, till the time that would kick, kick in. Am I understanding that correctly, or?
April fifteenth, that would be, April sixteenth, that'd be around.
Okay, cause it's, it says sixty days from becoming delinquent, and on the website says that, that they become delinquent i- if they're not paid within, I think, sixty days.
They're delinquent the next day, aren't they?
Well, that's what the website says, that they, that they become delinquent. Three months, yeah, three, three months later.
Three months after the due date, it becomes delinquent?
Well, that's, that's how, that's how I'm reading this.
Can you double check that?
Was that based on the original six month, the six month scheme, probably?
I'm paid, yeah, unpaid fees of ninety days are considered delinquent.
I bet that's.
Quite right, it ought to be consistent, whatever.
Yeah.
So, I, and, and, uh, and I raise that only because that, I've gotten the questions, uh, being, people being confused about it, and just wanna make sure that they.
Well, it, it reads unpaid fees which are more than sixty days.
Can, can you come up front to the microwave, uh, microwave? I'm kinda hungry right now.
Uh, if I'm reading the same part you are, it says unpaid fees which are more than sixty days delinquent may be certified to the city treas- by the city treasurer and submitted to the treasurer of Potawatomi County. So, become sixty days delinquent, meaning they're, one day past, they are the first day of the sixty days. Once they reach sixty days, I can then lean them.
So, so we may wanna clarify what's, what's posted on, on the website, because that says unpaid fees that are ninety days late are considered delinquent.
Okay, I will look at the wording on it.
That would be true, but it would, could be very misleading, I see your point.
Yep, yeah, so, so I just wanna make sure that.
And what is on the website will match to what is in this ordinance.
Very good, okay, thank you.
What, um, and it's probably a Don question, but, uh, maybe Dick can answer it. Um, Al's question to me is an important question in that, um, the landlords went to the legislature and lobbied that, that they have no responsibility for their tenants who don't pay their garbage bill. Um, and, so we can't lean the property of, um, rental property, is that a correct?
That, that is correct.
And so then what is our recourse when they don't pay their garbage? Can they continue to live there in perpetuity and never pay their?
We, we could actually bring a citation against the tenant as long as they're available.
You have to find them.
And the blood from a turnip, yeah.
And that's the frustration why I'd asked, Don, whether or not we could consider just telling him to get commercial pickup then. You know, we're not obligated, he said, by law, but the problem is then you don't know where they're taking their garbage, and I guess I understand his point on that, but, you know, it's a business.
We have someone who's not paying. We do have that option to notify the trash company not to pick it up, and then if they continue to put out trash, then, then Don, the health department can write a citation.
Can there, Dick, can there be any sort of, besides the fines, which again may very well be blood from a turnip, can, is there some sort of, I don't know, injunctive relief that would, I don't know what it would be, but what other recourse do we have besides finding someone who may not, is not paying their bill, so is probably not gonna pay the fine? Or do we not?
Some people are essentially judgment-proof.
So everybody else has to pick it up?
That's correct. That was kind of the difference between having, changing it to where the water bill can be in the tenant's name. That I understand, because they, you don't get to turn off the water. You know, if, if you own a property and the tenant's not paying, you can't go and turn it off. The water company won't let you. You don't even know they're behind. But with the garbage bill, you know, the thing is, is that it's gonna get picked up.
Well, but she said that she, that, that she can notify them, and then they won't pick it up, but is that just for rental properties, or is that any property in town? I, because I wasn't even aware of that. I thought it got picked up regardless.
It's very, very difficult for them to not pick something up.
That's why I say.
Well, yeah, they're, they're not gonna have a list of properties on them that they can't.
Correct. That we have to, it's, it's an exception. We have to say, hey, we are really watching this property. Please do not pick up there because we're looking to do a citation. So it's, it's an exception to the rule that we would have on non-payer.
And even that, I feel like is not really gonna solve the problem, because they're gonna care less. They're just gonna leave that trash on the curb, then everyone else is gonna complain. I mean, it's gonna just create a bigger problem, unfortunately.
Well, the owner of the property is the one who decided.
The owner of the property?
Yes.
Is that possible? Oh, so the landlord decided if their tenant doesn't, oh.
Isn't it as long as that tenant is still residing there? Or is, not, not at all?
Point the treasurer's making here is that if the landlord, you, you get into a different code section at this point. You're allowing a nuisance to remain on the property.
But we would have to somehow, I mean, they're not gonna know immediately until after the trash is picked up, the landlord, and that's who you're kind of gonna cite them. They don't know that it's coming until it's too, I mean.
It just would have been easier when the landlord, and it'd be hard for the trash pickup, but it would be easier when the landlord brings you the letter that they're not gonna be responsible for garbage payments anymore, that the tenant is. At that point, give them a letter saying, you need to hire a commercial carrier because we aren't gonna pick up property without any way to recover the fees.
It's too bad the landlord can't just increase the monthly rent by eight bucks or whatever it is to cover that. I mean, that would be the simplest way, but.
Well, well, now that I stirred the pot by raising a hat, how much of a, an issue is this with, with landlords? So how, how many, how many actually use this?
And so if the word gets out, if you're a tenant, you don't have to pay your bill anymore. I mean, it's gonna be just ugly. It's, it's just not fair.
Well, now, I will say, we, we do go after.
Can you come, come back to that? Everybody has to get used to coming up front and talking.
We do go after these tenants. I mean, we go after, we, we go and take the information we have, and we get enough information on them through the legal process that we do do tax offsets on them. So we're not letting them completely walk away. If I've got enough information on them, I'm gonna turn around and I'm gonna do a tax offset, offset for the sanitation bill. So hopefully, I'm not allowing them to walk away. It's more of an effort on our side to collect it, but we are doing everything we can to collect it.
And a tax offset, what, I mean, how would they, you mean, on a, on their tax refund or something?
Yes, if they get a tax refund in Iowa.
Okay.
We can snatch the portion of the tax refund that's owed to the city.
Oh, that's nice. I didn't make it do that.
Every, every level of government, yeah, and the courts can too, yeah.
Well, you can pay, because I think we talked about this last time. You can actually set up, do automatic payments now too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that, we had thought that you could not, then I tried it the other day. I'm like, oh, you can, like, you can do quarterly, or semiannually or annually, so we should probably make sure people, because I know a lot of people had asked about that, so it's, it's on there now, and it's free, or it's fifty cents, or something super small.
Fifty cents.
Yeah, so it's super cheap, so.
Yeah, we made, we made it, it actually cost them less than parking and driving here, to just pay it online.
Yeah, a less than a cent, yeah. And you can set up, and it just automatically comes out on the date every four, I mean, it was really simple.
Then you don't get, then you don't get stuck with the twenty-dollar fee.
Right, then you don't forget or.
We encourage a lot of residents to do the eighteen dollars a month also. A lot of them are doing, just flat-out paying eighteen dollars a month, a month.
But that is, I didn't know if you guys really, that that is open now, so.
Well, it's unfortunate. It's just another example of state government putting it to the local jurisdiction because a block of voters, in this case, the Landlords Association, went and lobbied for a benefit that most business owners have a responsibility to take care of. They're absolved of their responsibilities, and, and the burden's put on the local government jurisdictions.
I agree with Sharon. I think if it's a landlord situation, they should become a commercial. I, I don't think that we should be.
It sounds easy, but as, as you said, as the, the refuse drivers driving down the street, how does he know home A is a rent-owned, home B is an owner?
Well, and you also have.
Home C is a rent-owned.
There's, there's actually a fair number of trash will get sent out at places that are, is it, is it a duplex that's the threshold, or is it a fourplex? Duplex? Duplex?
Anything more than two.
Anything more than two. Occasionally, things will just get sent out there, and I, I know staff does as best they can, because sometimes it can be hard to determine, is this trash that somebody's just put out on the wrong day? Or is it a nuisance? But I know many times too, you, you just can't let the trash sit there, because that affects everybody else and the health, far worse problem, but it'd be nice if we could find a way for the folks who are responsible for it to pay for it. But a lot of that's been, our hands have been tied, as the mayor said.
Anything else?
Oh, look at how smart.
Smart lady.
You can figure out our process. We wait until you sit back down.
It'll be a fight for the first row, for starting history.
If you have anything on the agenda, the closer you sit in front, the better.
Any thing amongst the resolutions?
I have something on six D, but if somebody has something, something before then.
Yeah, I, I had a quick question on, on six A for the ground fields area. Was, was there, was there a particular area that, that we suspect needed some level of remediation in that, in that area? Or this was just more of replanning and reuse of that area?
It's really more replanning and reuse of it, but we will look at some environmental factors, and if I had to point to sites, you'll count them, a foundry, which we are working on cleanup. You have the old Bitner site. I don't know if you're aware of that site. It's on Twelfth Street. Used to be north of the city, it's on Tenth, no. I think it's Twelfth. It was, it's immediately right north of the former city maintenance facility, the green building that was torn down. That's, that's got lead contamination capped.
Okay.
And then perhaps the, the site, the city vacated at Thirteenth and Second. There's historical uses there that.
Well, I know that this is nearly adjacent to the northeast of a revitalization area. So is, is there some sort of urban renewal or revitalization purpose that we envision being put to this area?
Well, what we will do is we will look in this area, we will look at the land that we own. We will look at what we should do with our infrastructure. I mean, we've got some, some major streets that go through here. We've got Indian Creek that go through here. We will look at some of our, if, if this area is, has potential for recreational amenities, whether or not there are some environmental amenities that we could look at. We will look at and have conversations with whether or not we can have some better efficiencies with maybe some of the railroads. We will look at some of the environmental issues, but essentially what we're trying to do is, is take an area that has not been, and, and the area we're really looking at is, let's say, B to Indian Creek to Fifth to Tenth. Not a hotbed of, of, of interest in the private sector to invest.
Yeah.
Now, how can we make, you know, this area an asset to the entire community?
So this is the, the very early step.
We, we. Yes, and we will go through a process, and we will involve the people adjacent to it. I initially looked at this as what can we do in this generally small confined area that actually might set the stage for you to do something more meaningful in the neighborhoods adjacent.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, I think it's useful for the public to know the amount of work that is put into this sort of effort, both the near term and the long term.
And we had lunch today with the Union Pacific, and they asked that as we get closer and more defined on what we're gonna do, that we bring them in. They're obviously concerned about safety on.
Yeah, that's why they called me today.
Yeah.
Greg and I are gonna have some conversations in, you know, the upcoming months about, you know, their facilities and our facilities, and see if there's some things that we can do or not do. That benefit us both.
Thank you.
Your question on D?
Oh, yeah, just a general question. Do we know, in, in the, in the write-up in the picture, it, it showed Dunkin' Donuts, and Dunkin' Donuts is already there, but what, do we know what else is gonna go in there?
Oh, Krispy Kreme.
No, Krispy Kreme, you're thinking of different places. Get the donuts right.
So donut counters are.
There's nothing there right now.
This is Dunkin' Donuts.
It's right by Taco Bell.
They're, they're slightly different.
Dunkin's got cake dough.
Okay, you, donuts are all alike to me.
They won't be here tonight, I think.
Dunkin' Donuts is the coffee place.
Okay, so I should not say donuts are all alike to me when they're here?
He gets little sprinkles.
As long as there's like lemon inside, that's good.
Dunkin' Donuts would say that they serve other things other than donuts.
Coffee, Dunkin' Donuts is over as coffee.
I had Dunkin' Donuts on the mind because of, because of the giveaway thing they did.
I think it's a franchise they're trying to reinvent.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, so.
Well, it's, I wasn't sure, I, I, my hearing aid picked up all that, but.
It's working.
Yeah, how much, does the developer have, have commitments to, to fill the, up this, this project once it's constructed?
I don't know exactly that, but that, again, I think is a question for them.
And I, and I ask that because there's a, there's a older retail space right across the, the street from that. That's partially empty and looks pretty, pretty sparsely used, and so I'm just wondering about, you know, whether or not this is going to be filled up and become viable if there's space immediately nearby that's not.
Well, that other space is, is antiquated. It needs to be renovated. It doesn't have the visibility on the one side. So, I mean, I think it has a host of problems, and there will need to be some attention played to it at some point in time by either the current owner or if he sells it. Now, I thought that was gifted to the Catholic Church.
I can't even think what you're talking about.
You'll sundown Plaza.
Sundown Plaza, yeah.
Yeah. You got this phase right across.
Well, maybe this will spur more development in there. Just don't take away my eyeglass plate.
So, yeah, I, I would, I would ask them, I would ask both those questions to them, and.
There's a, like a bread store, or there used to be.
But they are agreeing to a minimum assessment.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Other resolution questions?
I just have a question on G, as far as, you know, I don't know, is this something that we should wait to get input? I mean, I would like to know if the business is down there, you know, what, what, what's their response gonna be?
They do, they do have a representative here who could maybe respond to what kind of responses they've been getting from the other property owners.
Okay, my name's Jeff Johnson. I'm the listing broker for Lot Three, Bluff Vision Replat One. We're currently under contract with American Precision Properties to sell the site. About two weeks ago, we sent out a copy of this Second Amendment, and it's been distributed to each landowner. The total landowners are, the count is ten, and they have a thirty-day window to which review the amendment and to come back with any questions or concerns. And we have so far, I would say probably three to four have acknowledged that they're, they're signing the document, they're sending back. And the document would be the Second Amendment in a signature page that shows their allocation of the total Bluff Vision land area. In this case, with the city, the land area that we're dealing with is about a five-acre parcel that is approximately eleven percent of the total land area. So it is a substantial portion that we do, we, we do, we do want to get the vote, and we do want to get the approval. But right now, we don't, our count is open, meaning we don't, there are agreements, may have, we may be at twenty, thirty percent of the agreements that have come, come back to us. But again, within that thirty-day window, we will, you guys are just one of ten landowners who received the amendment.
When did the, when does the thirty-day window start and end?
I believe we're, we're two weeks. We sent out everything through certified mail, and it was sent from the buyer, American Precision Properties. Scott, I don't know if you have a date? Okay, the twenty-seventh of January was the start date, so basically to the end of February.
Dick is, or maybe you can answer, is the landowners down there vote on a pro-rata or just one-tenth of, or one-eleven?
Pro-rat, pro-rata. So I have a breakdown of each ownership share, and then the, the percentage to the total area. The total area is just short of forty-six acres, and again, the city has five acres. I think the largest would be Ed Morris in Quaker State, and they're about twenty-five, thirty percent of the total. And, and what we did, back in two thousand eight, there was an amendment to the original covenants, and where they, or, excuse me, two thousand five. In two thousand five, they did a specific to the lot for the Marriott Spring Hill Suites. Where this request was similar, where we're, we're going directly to Lot Three, Bluff Vision Replat One. Some of the feedback that I've gotten from conversations was that the preference would be to remove the restriction altogether. And that's been, been the prominent feedback. But right now, we've distributed it for Lot Three only, so we didn't want to redirect anything this evening, or this afternoon and evening.
This was the project, this was the, the.
Extended stay.
Extended stay that I voted against, yeah, yeah, so I will definitely not be in favor of this, this time around.
Okay, and, and one thing I, that was the one, and it's not been a comment or feedback from the landowners outside of, of your comment. But we've had meetings directly, so what we've done is we have met with each of the landowners, and I'm in this position tonight where I can answer questions as well, but we've provided the, the elevations, the description of the, of the unit amenities. And one thing that is very clear is that I think they do use the word economy stay because they, they rent, or they, they'll do daily, weekly, monthly rates, and they do promote that. So they promote the lower rate, but the way they've achieved that is the ownership group, they own a number of branded hotels. And they, nothing changes from the bedding to the furnitures to the appliances. What, what is, it's the no pools, the no fitness facilities, where they're pulling back the amenities, and then focusing on the unit amenities and the construction materials. So you're not getting an inferior product by any means. It's a very attractive building, and we've distributed that. We've had photos from existing buildings that we've sent out to the landowners so they get comfortable with the project itself. But you do have a stigma with the extended stay, thinking that it's gonna be a truck stop type deal.
Another chalet, that's what I read about.
We have been assured that the quality of the product and, and the clientele, that is not the case.
One of the concerns that the council had when this went through is that, you know, typically, these are construction workers who are in town over a longer duration. And so the parking lot's full of work vehicles and heavy equipment trucks and.
Yes, and what do you see, you know, maybe in a rural setting, you may see a little more of, of the percentage go towards the construction workers, but your breakdown would be exactly that, some construction workers there for an extended stay. But you get a lot of business travelers. The I twenty-eight, twenty, or eighty corridor there in the Mid-America location is primed for business travel. But you get a lot of business travelers. The I twenty-eight, twenty, or eighty corridor there in the Mid-America location is, is prime for business travelers as well. And then you have leisure travelers coming in again for the, the World Series and other events. So, they have an, this would be more of an urgent type environment where you have a greater mix of business travelers, leisure. And then, but you'd always get construction workers because that's the benefit to them with the lower rates.
By note that Value Place off of Thirty-Fifth, that's fairly nearby. And that's also an extended stay facility, I believe. At times I've passed by there, I didn't notice anything that looked oblied or, or downgraded. It's, it looks like a pretty nice facility to me. Do, do we think this would be somewhat different or?
Well, then drive-by Interstate Inn.
This, and, and it's a world of difference. The old school motels that I think is, is part of the stigma. This is the farce thing from that you're, is, we've, we went through the planning commission back in November. And then we routed or got approval through the city for the development plan. And one of the changes was on the exterior here, we have an attractive elevation, but they had a mix of masonry products, stone, some siding. The siding has been eliminated. There are a couple of architectural towers that'll have some siding, but it's gonna be predominantly masonry, which would be a stone and ephes mix. So, we've changed that going through the city. We're also gonna get approval for the colors that we're gonna route these things through Rose and the Department. To make sure that whatever they're putting out there for construction is acceptable. That was a big part about this. These guys came, they did, their site selection was back in August and September two thousand thirteen. They spent a lot of time looking at a number of sites. They've got their sights set on that because they do want the restaurants. So, the proximity to the Hooters, Ruby Tuesdays, Quaker Steak is what they were looking for. And they like the access to the, to the interstates. But they set their mind on this site and committed to it, understanding that it was gonna be a lengthy process to get the approvals for their intended use. They've, they've invested a lot of money, not in just what'll be the project, but in their due diligence and inspection period to satisfy, to be a good neighbor and to, to follow the process. And I've been along for the ride here for the past five, six months and I'm, I'm very impressed with their product. And with the, with the, the team that's putting the project together.
Quick question. With the ten property owners, if you got approval from all of them, would you have a big enough percent without the cities? Or does the cities portion add up to enough that you, it wouldn't pass without the cities?
Well, we look at it carefully because our goal is to, to get this amended, we need seventy-five percent owner approval. So, we've looked at different ways here. I, with, with each landowner, I've been very clear that we need your vote. I, I, I'm not going into this hoping that I get something. We haven't, we didn't go this far and, and invest the dollars to come up short. So, I, I, my attitude has always been we need every vote. I would like a hundred percent vote. But we have looked at the different ways of what meets that. So, if we just didn't, if we had, if we were without the city vote, we could still reach our goal. But it, I think we need the, the city support as well for the project. And, you know, it's a big benefit on the backend with tax revenue, which I know that's been a distressed area and it's been a tough area. And I've been around it since two thousand seven and, and there hasn't been a new project since two thousand eight on that side of the street. So, I think it's a, it's a tremendous investment for someone to come in and, you know, three to four million dollars or more to put into the land and the building. And we're not asking for incentives, we're not asking for tax abatement. They're coming in clean. They just wanna build a, they believe in the location. And they wanna start construction. But no, my attitude is I would like a hundred percent of the vote.
Well, the reason I ask that is that, you know, when council votes, it represents that eleven percent in that part, that, that land. But we kinda also represent the taxpayers and, you know, the other property owners down there by virtue of being the city. So, I guess what I was kinda wondering, I haven't received any correspondence on this. I don't know if you guys have.
I've had some comments that, oh, my God, it's an, you know, extended stay and.
Well, I'm really more talking about the removing of the covenant or the lifting of the covenant more so than the type of business. So, I guess I'm almost wondering about maybe tabling this until the meeting on the twenty-fourth. It would give people time to, to let us know how they feel about this as far as, you know. I'm not sure one way or the other. I haven't talked to any of the business owners. I haven't had anybody contact me and say, hey, we don't want this.
I kinda agree with that because they're, that's why I asked, when does the, the thirty day window close? And that's within their thirty day window still.
Yeah, we'd be back here on the twenty-fourth. And at least it would give the property owners who originally wanted that type of covenant on there at least a chance to say, hey, you represent us too and this is not something we want, so.
Yeah, it's kinda weird that we're halfway through and there's been no comments whatsoever, but.
Have you had anybody say they will not sign?
No, it, well, it's surprising. So, what we did is some of the objections you might have heard initially, we expected that. So, what we did is we approached each landowner individually, some in person, some teleconference and some we'd sent an email package. So, you had someone who day one was opposed to it. What are we gonna get? It's an extended stay. And now they're fully support, in full support of it. But the one thing that has changed is we're getting input back to say, well, why Lot Three? Let's just do it across the board. So, that's the biggest input we're get, giving. And their preferences, preferences for us to update the amendment to release it from, from all lots.
Do, do you think you're gonna make that change to it?
We would like to. What, what happened and, and Mr. Wade may be the better answer, is that we sent this out two weeks ago. And I believe Mr. Wade put it on the agenda. So, the timing in, in, so we're not pressing to get the vote today. So, I'm not opposed to, to putting that in the backend. In fact, what my recommendation was gonna be is if we got the vote today or received the vote was there could be, it could be conditioned on maybe a sixty-five percent response from, from the other owner. So, I, I would like, if we could get it through today, maybe recommend that we put you on the backend if needed. And then, you know.
That would work too.
Kind of the history, I think, is Mackey who developed the Marriott Spring Hill requested from Southwest Iowa Foundation this covenant that no other hotel would go in there so that he would be the sole in already a country in the suites were there. Mackey has since sold. Apparently, the new hotel owner isn't as concerned. I, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but isn't as concerned as the original owner was who required the covenant originally.
There's probably more traffic, obviously, down there now than there was. I, I mean, I, I like that idea too, just to get based on a certain percentage that, I mean, can we do that though, Dick?
Oh, yes.
I, I like, I mean, that way we don't have to make you wait to hear from us, but yet it's kind of helping us know that if the majority's, you know, we're.
It certainly gives you a threshold to hit as well.
Yeah, it will. I appreciate that. And then the, the other thing would be, we'll quickly know, following this meeting too, we'll, we'll quickly get back to see if there is any change to the amendment. And then in that case, we'd probably have to put it forth again if they decided to, if the preference was to pull it from, from all lots.
That was gonna be my other question, is when we had to redo this anyway if it, that's what I thought.
So.
Sixty-five percent is not the number that.
Seventy-five.
It's required, seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent. Or eleven percent, right? Because it would hit.
If we had seventy-five percent, then we wouldn't.
Wouldn't need us.
No, I, I understand that. I just didn't know that everybody else understood that. I just wanna make it clear that.
Well, if we, because it were eleven percent, so we would, if it hit sixty-five and we voted yes, then we would be the final.
But in theory, if you didn't wanna do it, it takes away your ability to vote no, but.
Right, yeah, and I'd.
I just wanna make that clear to you.
And I would, I would, I would actually prefer to wait a couple of weeks and, and if there is no objection from anybody, then Dick would be, would we be able to make both changes at the same time in two weeks?
As all, as long as all the property owners are on board, that, that could be done.
And, and you'd have a better idea on the twenty-fourth.
Oh, yes, we would.
Yeah, we'd just do it one time then.
Yeah, and we wouldn't have to come back and revisit it.
I could go either way. I'm not, I just wanna make sure that we have an opportunity to get a feel.
Yeah, and, and he's only heard from three people. That's three property owners. It's not.
Yeah, and the others.
You don't have their signature yet. You just have a verbal.
Well, and I think that those are the ones where the, they've, they've signed and they've, or they've notified the buyer that they've signed and they sent it in. So, those may be, be received by now. I think we're, we're open to that. The, the other thing that I'd ask is, is on the city during that period, if we could take advantage of that time. And if there is any objections or concerns, we could have one-on-one meetings and present the product or.
I'd like to see the, the, the updated schematics.
Okay.
Of whatever it will be.
When, when this came up before with the council, was there a recommendation by, or an assessment from community development?
Just on the design.
Just on the design, okay. Because you, you, you mentioned before that you, you lacked a, a crystal ball regarding the development of, of the overall area. So, I, I was just curious as to if there's any assessment to how this, you felt that this fit in with, with overall.
It complied with the zoning.
Yeah, there's no basis for denying it.
Yeah.
Related, but different issue.
Understand.
Follows all the laws and the rules.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, let's, what does that leave us this evening? Are we off for now or?
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion this evening that we postpone till two weeks from tonight. And then, but we'll all have to vote on that yea or nay.
Okay, should I be present for that or?
If there's a consensus, I, I am agreeable to that. I think it makes sense.
And look at the second issue as well to see if.
I can't imagine that there'd be any.
Yeah, I don't think you.
Okay.
So, you can, you can go and have dinner and whatever.
There we go. So thoughtful.
Here in Council Bluff.
There you go, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so Dick, on that then, over the next couple of weeks, you'll look at the potential of removing the restriction altogether? Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on resolutions? Anything on applications and permits?
If I could, under resolutions, I'd like to introduce Dave McCann and Graham Jura. Two attorneys to be entering the vacancies or soon.
He really is my bodyguard. I'm Dave McCann. I know some of you guys.
I'm Graham Jura. I'm kinda new to the area. I've worked in municipal government law before, so I'm just kinda excited about the opportunity to do this as well.
Glad to have you on board.
The quiz will be later.
Back, back in the, let's not get into specific dates, but Lynn was our fearless leader in JC's. Back when, back when they trusted twenty-somethings with high explosives on Fourth of July.
Those were the days.
A far more innocent day.
Welcome.
Or that was the barbs that caught on fire and people. I think that happened one year.
Did it? That was before my time.
Fireworks and everybody went swimming in a hurry.
That was, I mean, looking back, that was, that was pretty dangerous. But the fire department was always there.
It was a body of water. What more do you want?
Anything off the agenda that?
Um, do you, Matt, do you need us to do anything to assist you on the, on the, um, the pipe, Chris, like pipe or?
Griffin Pipe.
Griffin Pipe, sorry.
Well, my understanding, and this is all secondhand, that they have laid off some people on the second shift, that they, they are doing some analysis. I've been working with, with Bob Munn at the Chamber. He has been trying to get ahold of US Pipe in Birmingham. Paul Cialino, who was the former CEO of Griffin Pipe, is now the CEO of US Pipe. The furthest west location of US Pipe production is in Wisconsin. So, obviously, this is much further west and at the apex of twenty-nine and eighty. And, and so, I think that conversations with Griffin Pipe's people, from what they're hearing from US Pipe, so it's a little secondhand, is that they think there's some long-term viability of our current location. But that's not confirmed yet from US Pipe. And so, we're trying to put together a meeting with US Pipe and Paul Cialino to, you know, those are great jobs that that pay a livable wage with an employee stock option program. And they're just jobs we don't wanna lose. Production wise, I don't know that if they have excess production at some of their, you know, who knows what all the, the factors are. But apparently, they have pulled back on the second shift. They're still running the full first shift. So, we'll get more and try and keep you informed, so.
Okay. And then my second question, maybe to Greg, who is, yeah, on the red light cameras. Do we, I mean, I'm, I'm confident that, that, you know, the, the cameras are here for the right reason and that's, that's to reduce traffic situations and, you know, public harm. And, and we've done a good job of that. But are, what exactly do we need to do to prepare? I know you, I know you have all the facts and the figures of, of the before and after. But is there anything else that the council needs to do to help support?
No, not at this time. The DOT had a.
Go out there and run some lights in a hurry.
The DOT had a procedure for report submittal last year, which we did. This year, it's pretty much the same, you know, information that we have to supply. I think the difference now is they have the administrative rules in place that obligate them to review the information we've provided. And it gives them some direction on what they're supposed, how they're supposed to interpret that. The two thousand thirteen accident numbers should be available statewide sometime in April. So, our, our reports will go in April, May timeline. I'm assuming they'll take two or three months to review them. And late summer, early fall, they should be providing some feedback to us.
Okay, because I think we've made a pretty clear case all along that it's not, we didn't, we're not doing this just to take money from the motorists. I mean, there was, there were issues. I, I was surprised that every single camera location was on a, a state highway though. I thought, I thought I read that in the paper.
All of our accidents.
Bloomberg is not.
Traffic is. Yeah, that's state highway.
Yeah, so.
Bloomberg is.
Yes.
But when you think about where our major thoroughfares are.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it just, and, and, I don't know, that just shocked me.
Don't think of a highway in an urban area.
In theory, though, al- almost all those roads in the very near future would be under our jurisdiction.
If the DOT had their way, yes.
And so, in that case, do we still, do we still go through the reporting then? We wouldn't then, all right?
No, the, these rules only apply to primary system, which is state jurisdiction highway.
Okay.
Greg, is the, like I said, is planning on having any kind of response to this or is this just gonna be a?
No, I mean, it may, you know, more. But I, I think the league, to be honest, the cities in Iowa are somewhat, first of all, this issue doesn't really apply to most cities in Iowa. So, the league really doesn't see a strong push from its members to take a position in this. Seems unlikely the league's gonna weigh in.
There's been discussion about lawsuits. We don't know if that's.
Well, I think Sioux City and Windsor Heights are already engaged in a lawsuit and I'm assuming they'll continue.
And Des Moines had theirs a few years ago.
Greg.
Their lawsuit?
Somebody sued Des Moines, I thought, a few years ago.
Well, I mean, Windsor Heights and Sioux City are suing Iowa DOT.
It stands to reason that if it went before the legislature, the legislature didn't take it up for a vote. It seems to me like it's, it's definitely backdooring it then to come up with administrative rules after, you know, everybody believed it was gonna require a voter. It wouldn't have gotten that far. So, it just, that's the frustration, taking away home rule again.
Well, that's why the legislature, legislature is taking it up in, in committee to determine whether or not they want to override that administrative assessment. So far, there's, there's, from my understanding, there's a decision made at committee level that, no, they don't have the votes to do that.
And Greg, I, I tried to read through the administrative rules or tried my best to keep attention to the length of them. I didn't see anything in there, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would, that would reimburse the local taxpayers for the amount of time that your staff will be pulled off of public safety and the actual duties of, of maintaining the streets to fill out more forms for Des Moines. Were there some in there I missed?
Oh, no, no.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted.
To be honest, though, the effort, I mean, we're pretty much doing that now. We monitor.
Sure.
The safety, you know, considerations. So, it's, it's just a matter of putting in a format the DOT wants to see.
Well, some of the things you talked about today are, you know, what's the baseline? Are we comparing last year to this year? Is it side impact wrecks versus rear end wrecks? Because I think the, in actuality and as people, at least. Because I think the, in, in actuality and as people, at least initially panicked, were fair they'd get a ticket, they would slam on their brakes and it would cause a rear end collision, which is a wreck, but a less potentially injury-filled wreck than a side impact collision and.
Right, I mean, there's some interpretation to the information that's required, um.
We already do, don't we, I, I, I seem to recall we put out annual reports of every intersection that has these and the, the safety statistics. And, so we were already fulfilling a, a safety function and now we have to put them into a, a different form.
Right.
That might seem, in my reading of it, to be stacked against them.
Well, the administrative rules say that, uh, the camera should be the last resort. Well, what does that mean?
Yeah, really, how many do you know?
Does that mean you have to have an officer out there twenty-four hours a day, uh, first, and if that doesn't work, then you can use the camera? I mean, we don't know how they're gonna interpret.
Sure, cause there have to be so many deaths from red light runners before it, so.
Right, if, if, if the accidents don't go down every year, uh, they also say that the camera should be, should not be a long-term solution. So, uh, after eight years, are they gonna say, take them out? And then we have to reestablish a new baseline with accidents and then, you know.
It's just like seat belts, you know, people have been told to wear them long enough, we probably don't need to remind them anymore, right?
About more complicated than seat belts, uh, each, each state or, I'm sorry, each city was, uh, was essentially coming up with its own rules with regards to cameras. And my understanding was that the, uh, the state is trying to get some sort of regulatory conformity across, across the state has, as to how cities, uh, uh, implement these cameras. That's my understanding at least.
Right, remember the, the rules apply to both red light cameras and speed cameras, both fixed and mobile. And there were, there was a lot more variety in how cities approached mobile speed cameras. Where I, I think everybody was kind of on the same page except for the fine amount on red light cameras.
But we'll, we'll still get the report every year, cause it's, that's always interesting to read the summary.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Art?
One, one last item and it relates to the budget. I went through the whole agenda today and I said, oh my God, did we forget to set a public hearing on March or February twenty-fourth for the budget? And I realized, we did that two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, this week we'll publish our tax notice as to how this year's budget impacts our property tax levy. That will come out on the thirteenth. Thought I'd let you know at this meeting what we're proposing and what we're gonna put out there. It's been an interesting year, we had the Harrington McGee case, we've had, uh, we've had some new se, uh, union settlements. We've seen some increases in public benefits and that sort of thing. And, uh, there's a lot of upward pressure on, on where expenses could have gone. The, that's the, that's the environment we're in. The good news is that next year, I do, we are not proposing any change in the property tax levy. By itself, the Tort and Liability Fund would have had an increased tax of seventy-five cents to bring us back to, to a reasonable number of what we should have in that fund balance. And we still have to do that levy, but we had enough reserves built up in the debt service fund levy and then the employee benefits levy that can offset the increase to the Tort and Liability Fund. So we can tell our tax, we can tell the, the, uh, people that live in Council Bluffs that we're not needing to increase the property tax levy next year. We can continue providing services at the same level we always have. Um, all, all the job position, all the, uh, current staffing positions are intended to remain the same. So in a sense, we can go forward just as we have without needing to increase property taxes. I think that's a, that's a good position to be in, I'm not sure how many other, um, government organizations across the state will be in that same position. But, uh, it's the budget that we're, we're, we're gonna be publishing on Thursday, you'll have the, the full books that day as well. But I did wanna let you know where we're proposing that the taxes go. And I believe this will be the eighth year then in a row without, without any increase. There's been decreases for most of those years, um, um, this year we got through it without having to increase it.
Oftentimes I'll hear, um, because numbers lie and liars' numbers. Figures lie and liars' figure, um, that people will say, well, you say the, the levy's staying flat, but you're collecting a lot more tax dollars. And so the bottom graph that you see down there, it's about one point one percent. And, um, I think the benchmark, and that's attributable to a little increase in residential property, the required decrease in commercial property and some economic development growth. One point one percent, which, um, I don't know exactly what the Midwest Consumer Price Index was, but it was right at one percent.
It was.
Cause that's how my pay is calculated, so.
Recall that well.
Pretty close to that. And, and so really, personnel, um, equipment, utilities and petroleum, all things that are calculated into that Consumer Price Index are reflected in that number. And we've been able to stay right in lockstep with the consumer, Midwest Consumer Price Index, which I think's also good.
Yeah, it's, it says that, well, our organization, they, uh, does a good job of planning its operations. Our department heads plan well, they hold their, their operations within their plans and if they don't, we talk about it and, uh, we get to the right place. And budget process again this year wa, was, uh, a smooth process. So I asked all, all the department heads for their projected revenue and expenses, uh, in, back in, uh, early November. Got that information and the, the thought is, you go back if we're, have something stressful happening, like something doesn't make sense or something. Uh, we're, we're just asking for two, two big cuts of the pie, but that didn't happen. When, when everything came together again, we found ourselves in a situation where we would not have to increase taxes. Um, where we saw overall revenues going up about three percent, uh, where we saw our expenses, payroll expenses going up two point zero zero percent. What were our negotiations and where did all the contracts seem to come in, right about two percent? So there's not any, any added staffing or that sort of thing that's, uh, having it run away from us. Processes, the process has been working, um, fairly well. And, uh, we, and that's what makes it a little easier to come before you and, and be able to tell you each year that we're not raising taxes or that we, you know, in some cases can lower it. And I think even more significantly this year, we saw something that should have, uh, should have, uh, increased our taxes. I, I recall some conversations back when we were saying, what can happen with this, uh, trial? And, and it was not a, it was not a fun question to have to answer, but we've built all that into it and haven't raised the taxes as well, so. Um, we'll try to keep doing what, what we've been doing and, uh, uh, as I said, I'll get you the complete book, uh, later this week. If any of you have questions or wanna go over the details so you're prepared to answer your constituents the following week, uh, please let me know. And then twenty-fourth, I hope that will give the community all the answers they need and that we'll have an approved budget.
Tort Levy Fund, um, not only will we be able to accommodate the required payment to the plaintiffs, but we're, we'll be able to build a little reserve in the Tort Levy Fund.
Yeah, the, the anticipation is that, that we'll have, we'll have that fund balance back up to, uh, a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, all the other fu, um, the two funds that do decrease are that, that the fund balances will decrease in the debt service fund because we've had some savings throughout and, and we should bring that down. And the employee benefits fund, some of the assumptions have changed and we have had significant savings in a couple areas, which I'll speak a little more at length with, uh, uh, on the twenty-fourth, but that should be going down. General funds, the, the balance that everybody looks at in the credit rating calls, that's remaining the same. We're maintaining those, those approximate fund balances, you know, almost like Goldilocks levels, not too high, not too low. You know, we're not becoming bankers with the city's money, but we're not putting ourselves in situations where we get stressed out for liquidity, so.
So just to make sure I understood, you, you all have the full budget available for public consumption at, at the end of the week?
Thursday.
Excellent, thank you. I'm a slow say myself, so I wanted to make sure that I understood.
Any, uh.
I need time as well.
And, and I don't wanna give your, your time away, but I know Art's always available to answer questions when you get there, so. Guess I haven't given your time away. Any other questions? All right, we'll see you at seven o'clock.
We don't have, uh, executive session anymore?
Oh, we might have executive session.
I should go in the executive section.
But we'll see the rest of you at second at tomorrow morning.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, we take pride in our community in volunteering our time to helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Hometown banking, the way it used to be.